Good evening everyone and welcome to the council meeting. I'd like to begin by, we the Greater Shepparton City Council begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, our privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Councillors, do we have any apologies to note tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, we have apologies for councillor Osvary, councillor, um, Burti and councillor Summer. And I'd like to move, they've accepted and leave absence be granted.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah, all those in favour, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, do we have any declarations of conflict of interest to declare tonight?
Madam Mayor, I'll declare a conflict of interest in report seventeen point two. And excuse myself for the meeting at that point.
That's noted. Item number five, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting, is any item of the minutes opposed? If not, would a councillor please like to move the recommendation? Councillor Adam?
The recommendation that the minutes of the previous meeting be declared.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, um? Councillor Sutton, all those in favour, motion carried, unopposed. Are there any public questions tonight, Mr Harriet? Tonight? Councillors, we'll now go to page two, item seven point one, review of the Waste and Resource Recovery Management Strategy 2013 to 2023. The recommendation is also on page two, would a councillor please like to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page two as a motion. The recommendation says that the council adopt the revised Waste and Resource Recovery Management Strategy 2013 to 2023.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Adam? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
So, the council has undertaken a midterm review of its ten-year waste management strategy, basically to reflect current developments and issues in waste management areas and to provide initiatives to address those initiatives, uh, to those issues. The public consultation process received feedback from some two hundred and five residents, which basically makes up only zero point four percent of our population. Now, the focus of the strategy is in fi- four areas, namely curbside collection, resource recovery centres, litter and illegal dumping and waste education. So, the waste strategy review 2018, this document provides a review of performance achievement over five years until 2018. And the document also includes a summary of actions included in the strategy and their corresponding outcomes in this period of time. For example, one of the actions in the strategy was to minimise waste going to landfill. And the outcome of this action has been, as per this review, that, that there was an introduction of food organics and green organic service in 2014 and also an extension in the opening hours of resource recovery centres to seven days a week. The strategy review also included considerations of several potential initiatives and recommendations on those initiatives. So, I would encourage, uh, people to read, to, to have a, have a browse through the strategy. Page one thirty-nine basically outlines a summary of actions against key initiatives. And it also outlines the tentative timeframes and costs involved. For example, one of the initiatives is about investigating viability of open tip days in place of hard waste collections to be done in, within the period 2019 to 2023. So, yeah, so it's, it's a useful review in a sense that it gives us an idea of the performance of council in waste management space. Well, council's waste management is an important strategy, however, everybody has a responsibility in waste management and making our, to make our environment healthy and environmentally sustainable. I would like to thank our staff for their hard work that they have put in in rev- in reviewing this strategy. And I endorse this strategy.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we had a hundred and five submitters, which is good. It's a, you know, it's a fair few numbers have taken the time to, to put what their thoughts are down on paper. Usual, um, concerns, there's hard rubbish which always rates high and free tip vouchers, which has been going on since I've been on council. And really, I, I can see the need for them and I can see the need that people would want their rubbish picked up on their front nature strip. But as time goes on, I've changed my mind how I feel on them. The, the hard rubbish, when you do visit the outskirts of Melbourne, some places you drive to the suburbs and there's rubbish lying everywhere on nature strips because it's on the following week or it was on last week and you get a terrible look on your neighbourhood. And the tip vouchers, what a lot of people don't realise, that the cost council, over, it's about thirty-two dollars per cubic metre of rubbish that we put in our own tip. That's a levy we pay to the EPA. So, that will have a significant impact on our finances. They, a lot of it will end up there anyway and that's what it's there for. But, um, yeah, I congratulate the people who've got off their backsides and at least put a submission in and I, I can understand their wishes, but unfortunately it's a, a pretty expensive thing to do and councils have adopted it generally from what I see. I wish, you know, I hadn't and I'm trying to hit out of it because of the costs.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page six, item seven point two, draft Central Park master plan approval of public exhibition and the recommendation is on page seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll move the recommendation as a motion as printed on page seven of the agenda.
Thank you, Councillor Hazeman, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, the, the appropriate time just to speak to this motion will be when the public exhibition process is over. There's been a process go through to develop the, the master plan for Central Park and, um, you know, consultation with user groups and a whole range of different people has produced the plan. Now, we'll, um, we'll be, see what the community submissions and the users think of the plan. To note, if I'm reading the press correctly, that an item referred to in here about the development of two new netball courts has already been achieved.
Fifty grants, yep.
Was achieved, supposedly in June of 2009, it's already been achieved, I think the interleague game was played there last Saturday. So, that's great that that work is already up and underway. This is a, a really good community facility, it's appropriate, there's been a master plan developed for it and I hope we get a significant amount of submissions come back to refine it even further.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hazeman. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page ten, item seven point three, Sir Mari Busher Memorial Advisory Committee. The recommendation is on page ten and eleven. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Sutton?
Motion as detailed on page ten and page eleven, please.
Very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just a few words. Um, this advisory committee was actually, actually established as a working group in 2010 and it became an advisory committee in 2013, which was actually to look for the opportunity to establish a more, a memorial to this remarkable man. Sir Mari Busher, he led the fourth and twelfth regiment in a four-mile charge at the Battle of Bursheba in nineteen seventeen and was awarded the distinguished service order. He was also awarded the companion of the Order of St Michael and St George at a later date. After the war, he was elected to the Victorian Legislative Assembly for the Golden Valley, where he held many ministry positions and he represented this region for the country party as the deputy leader and leader for sixteen years. He was appointed Victorian Agent General and represented Victoria until his death in nineteen thirty-seven and he received a nought-odd puffs humously in nineteen thirty-eight. The project has been successful in obtaining funding of a hundred and seventy thousand from the federal government and fifty thousand from the Shepparton RSL and, as well as Greater Shepparton. It's now time for this committee to be formally appointed and to, until the completion of the life-size statue, which hopefully will be in either late twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fourteen, item seven point four, contract one double eight nine Balaklava-Verny Road intersection upgrade. The recommendation is on page fifteen. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Found their page, would someone like to move that motion? Councillor Patterson, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation on page fifteen, thank you.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please?
I'll take that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hazeman? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this is a very important intersection in Shepparton. It's gone through the process, as I can remember when I was a kid, um, used to have two, two horses and three donkeys go through it on a Friday morning on the way to market, but now it's a very busy intersection. It's got to the stage where it needs lights and that is what we're going to do. Um, the process for the tender was basically, um, it's become very complicated, there was some input from some locals that wanted to have some, some input to help design the, the process and we went down that path and that extended our contract out a little bit, but the tender coming well and truly under what we expected anyway. So, it's all worked out very well and hopefully Jarvis Delaney Contractors, which is based in Orvale, it's a local company, can get on with it and get it done as soon as possible.
Thank you very much, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to make a comment about our, the process of consultation with the community and I am really happy and very impressed and I want to say thanks to our council staff who really went out of their way and made sure that community is, you know, is engaged. And although it's, the process started a bit late, we must admit, but once it started, I think there was a lot of effort that was put in to make sure that community comments and their reservations and their issues are taken into account. So, good job.
Thank you, Councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty, item eight point one, Community Arts Grants Round Two for 2018-2019. The recommendation is also on page twenty, would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor like to move that one? Councillor Adam?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page twenty as a motion, I will read it out, it's not a large recommendation or motion, that the council receives acquittals for the previously completed community arts grants projects and point to approve the allocation of eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars inclusive of GST or of funding under round two of the community arts programme 2018-2019 to the following community groups, which are obviously listed on page twenty-one.
And sorry, there's some further recommendation on this next page as well?
Councillor Adam just referred to...
Oh, you did so, thank you, okay.
Sorry, I didn't read it all out.
No, no, that's all right.
I don't know why you only read half.
That's all right.
You're going to have money, Luke.
Okay, do I have a second please? Someone like to second that? Councillor Patterson, Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to that motion?
Again, it's a small amount of money, but it just shows our commitment to, um, arts, I suppose, and culture in our region with our Sam coming on strongly, obviously. We can't just focus on one particular aspect of cultural and artistic type aspirations. I think this is a great little fund that we have, as I said, not a lot of money, but people like the Kaila Arts Shepparton, obviously they've got a small amount of, what was it, their two thousand seven hundred, sorry, and fifty dollars? Eleven hundred dollars Talamba Craft Group for a Talamba community quilt programme. There are only four small projects, but they mean a lot to those people. It also, uh, it spreads the love, I suppose, of our arts funding to the smaller communities outside Shepparton, so I fully support it and I think that eight thousand odd dollars goes a long way.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, just quickly, thanks, Madam Mayor. There were five applicants for this grant, unfortunately one wasn't eligible and I encourage them to keep their eyes open, something will come up and help them out.
Thank you very much for that. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. As we now go to page twenty-eight, item eight point two, Community Matching Grants Round Two for 2018-2019. The recommendation is on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Like to move that motion? Councillor Patterson? What would you like to move?
I'd like to move the motion on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine, thank you.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councillor Hazeman? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, just quickly, again, um, very good, well, this one was as described, there was a lot of, um, applications that we weren't able to fulfil, ran out of money, which is a common thing for council. But it's great that the, the small organisations are out there and I, they know they're available, they know they can apply for them. Those that missed out unfortunately might have to wait till next time. I'd encourage them to do that and keep their eye open, they'll be out another six months or so for applications again, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to bring attention to the, the ver- the variety of different projects that are included in this funding round. There's some smaller arts projects, of course, but there's, you know, wheel uniforms, reactivating the Rupner Pool. It's just a variety of different, it's reflective of the whole community and all the different things and, and, as I said, aspirations that we have. So, I think it's a great programme again, this matching grants programme, because it, it fills the gaps in a lot of funding, a lot of funding voids, I suppose, where people can't get small amounts of money to see their, um, projects come to fruition. So, I think it's fantastic.
Very true, thank you, Councillor Adam. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
I would just like to note that the, um, that the funding amount was, um, it, it, there was a trial of five thousand dollar, it was increased from two thousand and five hundred to five thousand dollars and that was a trial and it was, it has been a successful trial, so the recommendation also includes, um, and there's a recommendation to approve a maximum of five thousand per community matching grant permanently. So, I think looking at the projects and the, and the success of this trial, I would be happy to endorse that.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page forty-three, item eight point three, Greater Shepparton Municipal Emergency Management Plan. The recommendation is also on page forty-three. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the, um, the motion as printed on page forty-three of the agenda.
Thank you, Councillor Hazeman, do I have a second please? Councillor Adam? Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, Madam Mayor, this is a very, very significant document because it, uh, it's the overarching emergency management plan for the municipality and it provides a range of information to emergency services, other organisations and the community on how risks are going to be dealt with and the management arrangements for emergencies. So, it's very important, but more than that, it also brings together a range of organisations that share that information. They share the process in the preparation of the plan and it's most appropriate that council adopts this. I understand that there's an audit process every three years and that date's falling due in September of this year. So, you know, with the plan being updated and reviewed by council appropriately, it'll fit well into that audit process.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hazeman. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I don't think I can add anything further to Councillor Hazeman's comments.
I didn't think so either.
No.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to fill in a few gaps.
Thank you, very good, very good.
The one good thing about this plan is we don't know how good it is and we hope we never find out.
Gap that was starting and I thought it made some...
It's debatable whether that's added value, wouldn't you agree?
I'm sorry, you're a vegetarian.
Yes, very dear.
Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page forty-seven, item eight point four, the Small Town Festive Grants for 2019, the transition round and the recommendation is also on page forty-seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Would someone like to move a motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page forty-seven, that the council receives and equates the 2018 Small Town Festive Decoration Grants and number two approves the allocation of two thousand GCT inclusive of funding under the Small Town Festive Decorations Grant Programme 2019, transition round to the Duki and District Development Forum.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this is about the Small Town Festive Decoration Grants and, um, in 2018 there were a total of three grants that were awarded, so three, uh, small towns benefited. Um, so there's a report about those projects and this, in this round, council has received an application from only one applicant, from only Duki and there's a recommendation to approve that, uh, funding, um, application funding grant. So, that's in a nutshell, however, the point that is, um, that, that must be noted is that we need to promote it perhaps better and engage our small towns better because getting only one applicant for this grant is not the outcome that we are aiming for. So, hopefully in the next rounds, we will have better participation.
Thank you very much, Councillor Abdullah. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-one, item nine point one, the council plan for 2018-2019 quarter three progress report. The recommendation is also on page fifty-one. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page fifty-one as a motion, that the council note the progress report for the 2017-2021 council plan, which provides details in relation to achieving the measures of success identified in the council plan 2017 to 2021.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Hazeman? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just a few comments, thank you, Madam Mayor. This, uh, report basically provides the third quarter update of 2018 to 2019 in relation to the actions taken to achieve the key strategic objectives that were identified in the council plan. The plan was, of course, developed under the Local Council Act 1989 and this regular reporting on the plan, it basically aligns with the council's accountability framework. Uh, the plan identified five domains and their key strategic areas, objectives in each of these areas and the strategies to achieve those objectives were outlined. Those five, um, areas of council's strategic plan are leadership and governance, social, economic, built and environment. This quarterly reporting is also one measure of addressing the risk of failure to report to council and the community. Now, that's the risk and keeping our community informed about council's performance in key strategic areas is one of the foundation principles of good governance. If you look at the, the performance review, it has KPIs and the performance is highlighted as whether the performance in each of these areas is on track or off track. Targets and actual achievements are also highlighted in the, in, in the report. I can give an example of, of the social domain where some of the KPIs, um, most of the KPIs are showing that they are on track. And, um, and economic domain also has, um, green rating, which means that, um, most of the targets are on track, but of course there are some red indicators as well, which basically shows that these areas are off track. One of the, the red, um, off-track item is under economic domain, which is saying that the number of existing businesses council assisted to expand their operations in Greater Shepparton. Well, this is not on track at the moment, the target was to achieve fifteen of such businesses, but however, council has achieved only eighteen, uh, ten in this time period. So, um, basically, so that's, that's just an indication of how you can gauge the performance of council with respect to their council, to this council plan. It's a very good document, it's like a performance, it's like a scorecard, which I would encourage our community to go and have a read. That's all.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go, Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just wanted to add a few comments to Councillor Abdullah's comment, yeah, this is a great document because it does, um, I suppose, a council plan, it's a four-year plan, sometimes it's easy to get lost two or three years into a, into a council where we sometimes, I won't say we forget what we said, but this keeps us focused on what was put down. And of course, council plan, while it is an overarching document that, um, well, it lists our aspirations moving forward for the whole council, it can be changed and sometimes these reports give us some really good background to know that things aren't working at as maybe as we thought, or maybe we have to shift our focus potentially slightly to achieve the, the end result that we intended to at the beginning. So, I think it's a great document, I think all councils read it and I think everyone should read it and actually take a heat of what it says and, uh, if we're going ahead as we planned, well, that's great, if we're not, we, we can take stock of the situation and potentially make minor changes, so it's well worth it.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-four, item nine point two, contracts awarded under delegation and contracts advertised but yet to be awarded. The recommendation is also on page fifty-four. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'll move the, um, the recommendation page fifty-four, thank you, Madam Mayor, which you've already read out.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, thank you. There's a couple of these contracts here that have been awarded and there's been one, other one awarded tonight, which we've just done. There's several that have been, uh, basis coming through the winding up of the tendering season. In a lot of ways, the contracts have been out and they're to be finalised and hopefully finished by the end of the financial year, which will wind up our, um, our capital budget. So, we want them all done and dusted by then if possible. Um, there's some interesting ones there still to come and, um, Watch Road, I find particularly interesting, Rupner, it's, um, hopefully that'll come in that we can keep Watch Road open. Um, that's a very busy route that does connect people that for some reason want to leave Rupner and go to Shepp, but there's a lot more people want to leave Shepp and go to Rupner, so that's a very viable option for them to take it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, just, um, yes, Madam Mayor, I'll just say, the construction of the traffic calming works in Fry Street, I think that's a really good thing to happen. It's quite dangerous walking across those pedestrian crossings as they are, so it'll be nice to have them, you know, made a bit taller and so a bit safer for all the, um, all the pedestrians that are walking across the road. It's quite dangerous. Thank you.
Very good, thank you for that. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Hazeman?
As Councillor Patterson pointed out, there's a couple of contracts here, construction contracts that have been awarded and were awarded in one previously on the agenda and I suppose that always makes you a little bit nervous about whether there's going to be issues about conflict, uh, delivery, all that sort of thing, but hopefully that's well under control.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour. Against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-nine... Councillors, we now go to page fifty-nine, item nine point three, April 2019 monthly financial report. The recommendation is also on page fifty-nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that. The council receive a note, the April 2019 monthly financial report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Through someone else, I'd like to speak to the motion, yes. I'd like to maybe...
Big one, Danny, didn't he?
Mrs Lipbridge, Karen here tonight.
Director of Corporate Services.
Acting Director of Corporate Services. Give us a brief synopsis of the situation.
Council's year-to-date financial operating performance is as per the forecast, expectations and within budget. While council's current cash investments are at high levels, this is in anticipation of the level of capital expenditure planned over the remainder of this year and next. So, the focus remains on delivery of the 2018-19 Capital Works Programme with two months left in the financial year. However, expenditure on larger capital projects such as the New Shepparton Art Museum and Cosgrave Landfall is expected.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that was very concise.
Was there anything to add, councillor Adam? Did you wish to add anything, councillor Adam?
No, that's all.
Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, no, there's really nothing to say after that. Once I felt I had a really good delivery of what's actually happening, I congratulate Karen. But the, our finances are looking good, you know. It's always deceiving, this time of year it's starting to get easier to understand, because we're getting close to the end of the financial year. Going back on the monthly payment of rates, early in the season throws you around a little bit. You don't know where it's going. But as we get closer to the end of the financial year, it all starts to balance itself up, which is really good. We need to get on top of our capital works, and hopefully, they'll come home really strong. And, you know, when you compare, and people should understand that we're given briefings regularly on finance every month before the council meeting, and the figures we're given are very easy to understand. And I encourage anyone out there in TV land that has issues, don't understand how council is travelling financially, to contact council. Our staff are always happy to sit there and explain it to you. All indicators are really good, you know, our borrowings are low compared to everyone else, and everything's in target range. It should be, as we set out by the state government. So, yeah, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour, against. Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty-one, item nine point four, domestic animal management plan for 2021. The recommendation is also on page sixty-one. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Someone like to move that, please? Councillor Patterson? What would you like to move?
I'd like to move the recommendations on page sixty-six and sixty-seven. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, it's actually recommendations on page sixty-one. There's on page sixty-one. So, we're actually on page sixty-one, and the recommendation is also on page sixty-one.
Sorry, yes.
Good luck.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation on page sixty-one.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Hazelman. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, it's a process we go through every four years to oversee, required to by the state government. Council have been very proactive over a few years now, addressing issues that we had with our pound. There's concerns from some groups that, you know, there's too many dogs being put down, and I always believe there has to be dogs. It has to be put down, don't get me wrong, but it's better if we can make it, that, you know, a dog is a good dog. We should be able to find a home for it, and that's becoming more acceptable. The state government have done their part in this, too, by banning large-scale puppy farms, so there's not everyone getting a dog for Christmas that don't need a dog. And I know in one council in Melbourne, I'm not sure which one it was, there is a move to licensed pet owners, which I think will eventually happen. You know, half the time, it's not the pet or the cat or the dog's fault, it's the owner's fault. And people just have to need to understand that if they have a pet, they are responsible for the pet, and they need to do the right thing by the pet. And there's too many people in this world that get pet animals and don't do the right thing. The dog or the cat ends up wearing the bad end of the bargain, which should be the owner that's putting the clink down the road, not the dog.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, have you finished? Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Couldn't follow that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Would any councillor... Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Everything Dennis just said.
You're sitting too close to him. Okay, very good. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour, against. Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty-six, item nine point five, instrument of delegation members of staff and development hearing panel. The recommendation is on page sixty-seven, sorry, sixty-six and sixty-seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page sixty-six and sixty-seven of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Adam. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's, the Local Government Act confers upon council the power to do a whole range of things. And it's then the responsibility of council through delegation to its staff to enable those things to be carried out. And this is almost like a bit of omnibus legislation. It encompasses a wide range of things. It incorporates where changes to the act have occurred, and specifies the positions and roles of people who will undertake certain things under this delegation. The actual document itself is quite substantial, but it's important that this is done on a regular basis. The previous time was back in October of 2018, and this brings it up to date.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
As usual, Madam Mayor, I can't follow that. It's word for word, it's exactly what I was about to say, but councillor Hazelman.
Okay, very good. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour, against. Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page seventy, item nine point six, appointment of audit and risk management committee independent members. The recommendation is also on page seventy. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page seventy of the agenda.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Adam. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Audit Committee sought community representatives, and there's been quite an extensive process in which the Chair, Mr John Collier, yourself and myself participated in interviews. As a result of that first round of interviews, Mr David Courtum was appointed, and a telephone interview was undertaken with Mr Goran Mitreski. As a result of that interview, it was determined that it would be good to interview Mr Mitreski in person, which was done. And as a result of that second interview, the recommendation is that Mr Goran Mitreski be appointed for a three-year term.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazelman. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just like that. This is an important committee of council. Not that they all aren't, but this is extremely important in respect to our financial situation, in respect to how we are, our governance and everything else that we do with council. It's extremely important, and I'm sure councillor Hazelman yourself went through a pretty, not extreme, but a very considered process to select Mr Mitreski, and we were obviously briefed on this, and we, councillors all felt very comfortable with the results. So, good effort on your behalf, and councillor Hazelman's behalf as well.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'll just speak very briefly. Yes, I was actually on that interview panel, and I think the fantastic thing is we had such a high calibre of applicants. And as councillor Adam has pointed out, this is an extremely important committee and a supportive committee to the council laws as well. So, I'm looking forward to our new members, and obviously, you know, fantastic applications, as I've said.
All right, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against. Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page seventy-two, item ten point one, park name Sherwood Park, Park View Estate, Marupna. The recommendation is on page seventy-four. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation on page seventy-four. Thank you.
Very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yeah, this is a name change for a street. It's very complicated, the process of changing names. And as this is very close to where I live, I'm starting to become a bit concerned. We've got Sherwood Park over there now, and we've got lots of other names, and I'm scared I'm going to run into Robin Hood one night. But that's the theme they're going with, and it's all good. And, yeah, it's a name change, and that's what it is.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sutton, would you wish to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
And I think, myself speaking, it's interesting, there were certainly no objections to this name change, which is an important thing to note. All right, we'll all go to the vote. All those in favour, against. Motion carried, unopposed.
Councillors, we now go to page seventy-seven, item ten point two, the Shepparton Railway pedestrian overpass and shared pathway linkages. We have a recommendation in front of you. Would someone like to move that recommendation, please, as a motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Yeah, I would like to move the recommendation that's displayed on the screen here as a motion. I wouldn't read that, but would explain it later on.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
It's the one in front of you. Is that a page number?
All right, sorry. Shall we start the process again?
Yes.
All right, let's restart. Do we do it again?
Probably need to read it, councillor Abdullah.
What would you like to move?
That would be interesting. All right. Here I go. So, I would like to move this recommendation as a motion, that the council, number one, receive and note the Shepparton Railway Station Pedestrian Overpass Concept Plan, October 2018, and draft Shepparton Railway Station Shared Pathway Linkages Concept Plans, June 2018, conversation report, March 2019. Number two, in relation to the pedestrian overpass at Shepparton Railway Station, note both the Shepparton Railway Station Pedestrian Overpass Concept Plan, October 2018, and the Shepparton Railway Station Pedestrian Overpass Alternative Concept Plan, March 2019. Note that the preferred concept plan for the overpass is that, which is proposed on the Shepparton Railway Station Pedestrian Overpass Alternative Concept Plan, March 2019. And note that if the project is funded and progressed by the appropriate rail authority, the design is subject to change. Number three, in relation to the shared path linkages, endorse the Shepparton Railway Station Shared Pathway Linkages Concept Plans, June 2018, conversation report, March 2019. And note that a budget bid for this project will be made in a future budgetary cycle. Number four, continue to work collaboratively with the state government to achieve the level of pedestrian connectivity required to serve the railway station, and council's ultimate aspiration to construct a new railway station in preparation for the nine velocity trains that will ultimately service Shepparton. So, that's the recommendation. I would like to move this as a motion.
Thank you very much. And I had a second, which was councillor Sutton. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
All right, now I'll speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The need for enhanced connectivity to the Shepparton Railway Station was highlighted in Shepparton Railway Precinct Master Plan 2017, as well as in other council strategies such as CBD Strategy 2008 and CBD Revitalisation Project. A key short-term objective of this railway precinct master plan is to improve accessibility and connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists by way of a pedestrian overpass and shared path linkages. So, accordingly, council developed two council concept plans for the overpass and shared pathway linkage. Consultations on two concept plans were commenced in January this year, and they concluded in February. A total of sixty-three submissions were received. To address some of the cost-related concerns highlighted in the submissions, an alternative Shepparton Railway Station Pedestrian Overpass Concept Plan, March 2019, was developed. Now, this recommendation is about noting of these three documents, and is also about to, for the council to work collaboratively with the state government on this project. Now, it is important to note that these concept designs are subject to change. However, at this point in time, this information on concept plans will provide significant grounds on which we can activate council's advocacy with the state government. It is important to have some high-level concept plans to inform council's advocacy for appropriate services and infrastructure at the railway station. Now, if a modern-looking, aesthetically pleasing and functionally enhanced Shepparton Railway Station is the vision, then this is a good start, I believe. It will not happen today or tomorrow. Perhaps it will take ten more years. But to get to that point, we have to start planning now, based on some assumptions, and come up with a plan that is flexible enough to accommodate the changing requirements and needs of the time when it is finally built. To make Shepparton a pedestrian and cyclist-friendly city, such accessibility and linkages are much needed. I would also note that there's assertions by some submitters and objectors that Shepparton is a rural city, and therefore, it does not need this excessive design. It's not the one that I agree with. The reality is that Shepparton is one of the major regional cities, and hence worthy of a decent and adequately functioning railway station to match its regional city status. At the moment, yes, sadly, it, the railway station, has the look and feel of a rural railway station. And I believe that the endorsement of this recommendation today will be a major step towards the active advocacy for a new Shepparton Railway Station with better shared pathway linkages and pedestrian accessibilities. So, I support this recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm not particularly happy with the actual concept plan that has been out for public consultation. I think this plan's a bit too premature for actioning at this time, but I do note that it will provide something that we can take to the government when we get to that stage, to move the railway station to the opposite side of the tracks, and it would be facing the CBD. I also note that we need some data to see how many people actually use the station, and is an overpass really warranted at this stage? I do know that it's Vic Rail, and they'll have to be paying for it, so I'm happy to endorse this plan just as a start, so that we can actually advocate on behalf of Shepparton to get a new station on the other side, and also have something to take to the government at some stage.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Just like a few quick points, please. I think a lot of the community out there had the wrong impression council was going to build this monstrosity. That's not the, our idea at all. This is forward planning. I don't like the colours on it. Probably the size of it's not right. Certainly, the cost is well and truly out of our budget. We were never going to pay for this. It was going to be the relevant authority that pays for it. And this is a part of our forward planning, and I congratulate the council for doing that. It might be ten years, it might be fifteen years, but we, if we don't do it now and do something about it, eventually, we will have the nine velocity trains landing, lots of people, and people sitting back and going, "Look at council." You can, why don't they do some forward planning? Why don't they think ahead? Why don't they think of an overpass? So, that's exactly what we're doing, and putting in place the infrastructure and the planning for the future. And that's what this is. If you don't like the design, don't worry, you'll never probably see that design. But it'll be an overpass of some sort, and it's a conceptual design, and that's what it is. And, yeah.
Totally, totally agree, the need for it.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
Short couple of comments. This is really, this document, or this motion, is really about taking that first step into this space at the beginning of discussion on this overpass. And as other councillors have expressed their opinions in respect to whether, but what we see now is the final design, probably not. It may change a lot, and the motion does refer to that as well. So, it's just the first step that needs to be taken, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to add a few comments, and I think it's always good to be reminded of the lobbying that we do to improve the more frequent services, the railway station itself. And our aspiration is to attract, you know, more investment also into our station, and to grow the station to something bigger and better for the future. But I think the question needs to be tonight is what is the future of that station? And I think that's a very big question prior to really putting up, you know, a concrete design. So, I'm very pleased that it's only a discussion. We certainly haven't made a discussion. so I'm very pleased that it's only a discussion, we certainly haven't made a decision on it, but I think, you know, we need to be aware that the station may be relocated to the opposite side, would that then mean that we need something this, of this multitude? I don't think so. So I think we need to be really, you know, on the front foot of this, and make sure that we are lobbying for the right things at the right time, and to me, that would be really looking at the station itself, the positioning of the station, you know, is it going to be on the opposite side? If that's the case, as I said, is this the type of overpass that will be needed? So they're the questions that we'll, we will be discussing moving forward, but at this point of time, we know that this is subject to change, we are certainly just noting this design, and I think that's very important to, um, to be reminded, particularly on my behalf tonight.
All right, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page ninety-two, item ten point three, Appointment of Greater Shepparton City Council as Chair of Regional Two of the Murray Darling Basin, Murray Darling Association, the recommendation is on page ninety-two. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
I'd like to move the recommendation on page ninety-two as a motion, and I will read it out, Madam Mayor. That the council confirmed councillor Dennis Patterson as delegate to the Murray Darling Association, nominate councillor Patterson as nominee for Chair for Region Two of the Murray Darling Association, commit resources, secretariat support, to assist with administrative functions, to support the region chair position, and work with the Murray Darling Association National Executive to establish operational and strategic leadership of the region, consistent with the Constitution and Strategic Plan two oh one six one nine of the Murray Darling Association.
Thank you very much councillor Adam, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a really important step for us, as we all know, without getting into detail about the water issue, we could spend hours on that, it is absolutely vital to our economic, not just growth, but sustainability, we can't move forward unless we can make our voice heard in respect to this water issue, and nominating councillor Patterson has been a great advocate for this for me, for a long time, as we all have been, but Dennis has been right up there at the forefront, I think he's the right person to sit on this chair, to actually chair this whole association, which is fantastic. Um, that's about it, I think, yeah, look, it's important, we're, we're leading the way on this as a region, as we should, and I hope it all works out for in our benefit, and which I have my doubts, but...
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I fully endorse this recommendation, and I have full faith and confidence in councillor Dennis Patterson, given his insight and passion for this subject, I think he's the right choice, and I wish him all the best.
Thank you very much, would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'd like to say a couple of quick words, thanks, Madam Mayor, and first of all, I'd like to congratulate councillor Peter Mansfield from Moira, who's had the job for the last few years in the Moira Council, have done a great job, they've thrown resources behind it. The Murray Darling Association isn't the answer solely to our problem, and it is an enormous problem, our dairy farmers especially, but all our agricultural industry is really in trouble out there, water's just gone through the roof, you know, six hundred and fifty dollars a megaliter for temporary water, no one can survive buying that, especially a dairy farmer. So it's very important that we are out there and we're making lots of noise, and we're trying to rally the troops from our local Regional Two, there is nine regions in the Murray Darling Association which go from South Australia into Queensland, so you're not necessarily arguing, well, you are arguing for your region, but you've got to balance it against the other regions, so it certainly isn't the be-all of, end-all of getting this, this debacle straightened out, which is a debacle present, but it is a step in the right direction. The biggest issue is trying to identify, well, a, a, a quick example is, at the last Murray Darling Association meeting, Shepparton moved a motion regarding the environmental damage to our Golden River, there's too much water going down it, there's three thousand gigalitres went down last summer, which is, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand more gigalitres of Golden Mary, or the Catcher Management Authority believe it can't handle that, caused significant damage to the river stream, banks collapsed, et cetera, the whole basin now is aware of that, and they're all, even the Queenslanders are, are saying, 'We've got to do something', you know, it's overloaded, we've overloaded the system, we're getting too much water out of Victoria to make up for what's not in Queensland and New South Wales. So it's not the be-all, end-all of fixing the whole problem, but it's a significant part of it, and with the local water group, and all other water groups and people involved, if we all work together, hopefully we'll be able to sort something out, and I'll be there vodding tut and ale for it.
Very good, thank you councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? And councillor Patterson, I think it's worth noting too, you know, you'll be a voice at the table, if not with the ministers, and talking about our region, I think that's gonna be a much stronger opportunity for us as a region, and with the, you know, lobbying that we're seeing around us, it's important we're part of that, so we're really looking forward to seeing what you can come back with, and, and us to contribute as well, so well done. All right, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed, not against it, I hope.
A coffee drawer.
Bit of a for himself. Councillors, we'll now go to page ninety-five, item ten point four, proposed naming of corner of Shepparton BMX facility, the recommendation is also on page ninety-five. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Someone like to move that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd love to move the motion.
Councillor Adam?
If the council approves the naming of the first corner at the Shepparton BMX facility as the Lee Egan Corner.
Anyone have a second please? Councillor Patterson, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, um, if you read the background to this particular motion, I think the initial request was to name the whole complex, the Lee Egan complex, but due to the actual rules and regulations of the DOP and a few of the other government departments, that's not something that we can do apparently, we should refrain from naming facilities and, and things like that after a living person. Um, Egan is, and hopefully will keep living for a long time, um, but naming the first corner, um, yeah, look, I've got no, no, um, problem with that at all, and I support it, I, I just do feel like I didn't think this had to really come to council, I thought this could have been just a local, uh, decision made on it, because it's not actually, um, that being said, it's good to endorse it, so Lee's been a, a, a giant in that particular sporting field, and he needs to be acknowledged in some form, and if we can't do the, the original request, I think this is probably a second best in respect, but it's the best we can do at this point in time, and hopefully in the future, well into the future, maybe we can revisit something else, we won't be revising it, but other people will be.
Okay, thank you councillor Adam. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, just quickly, Lee's probably happy to have a corner named after him under the current legislation that you have to have passed before you can have a whole facility named after you. And realistically, it probably will be one day, um, he was a champion, and the club's right in doing what they did, and as councillor Adam said, if they had have just named it, and we didn't have to come to it, it probably would have been that, but, um, there's processes to follow, and they've done the right thing, and we've had to do the right thing too, and eventually, hopefully, long time away.
Great. Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to say it's perfect timing with the internet, oh, sorry, the national BMX tournament here this week, to have this acknowledgement of Lee, and I think it's really significant, and, you know, to make this an opportunity to share with all of our visitors as well, to, to prove that we have such a, you know, a fantastic champion. So, yeah, great, great timing, but also absolutely well-deserved.
All right, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now turn to page ninety-eight, item eleven, reports from councillors, nil received, item twelve, reports from special and advisory committees, nil received, notice of motion amendment or rescission, nil received, documents for signing and sealing, nil received. We'll now go over to page ninety-nine, item fifteen point one, the council laws' Community Interaction and Briefing Programme, the recommendation is on page one hundred, would a councillor please like to move a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page one hundred.
Thank you very much councillor Hazeman, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just to say that this actually lists a lot of the, um, information on a lot of the programmes that we attend over the past, uh, past month, so we do lots of things in the community, and this just is a little bit of what we do do, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page one hundred and one, item sixteen, urgent business on included on the agenda, nil received, confidential management reports, item seven point one, designation of confidentiality of information, we have a recommendation there that the council meeting be closed, would someone like to move that recommendation please? Councillor Sutton?
I'd just like to move to the recommendation pursuant to section eighty-nine to A of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine, that council meeting be closed to members of the public for consideration of a confidential item.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Adam? Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed, and we ask those in the gallery please to leave the meeting.